All right. The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in record session on November the 7th, 2023 at 10:00 a.m. in Commissioner's courtroom at County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is invocation and pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag. Commissioner Watson will lead us.
Almighty, thank you for this day. We recognize Saturday, November the 11th as Veterans' Day. Let us pray for and honor the sacrifice and dedication of those who have served and are serving in the Armed Forces of the United States. We also ask you to please keep our first responders safe as they work to protect us. Give them strength in the face of danger and courage when they too are called to serve. As we go through this day, bless the work of the Commissioners Court, our county, and our country. We also desire your glory and blessing in all that we do. Direct our thoughts, words, decisions, and actions toward the right path and help us stay on track. Let your will be done as we plan and make decisions. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S., one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and our concerns. We've got a couple assigned in. Karen Hall.
Judge Peters, Commissioners?
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Okay.
Or move it so it's closer to you.
All right. Is this working?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start again. Judge Peters, Commissioners, I want to thank you again for the very informative workshop that was two weeks ago on election machines. Personally, I don't see us moving away from machine voting, but it doesn't hurt to be aware of potential problems. It was nice to hear some actual research. Far too many people get their information from, and I'm going to quote Trevor Noah, "The University of Facebook." For me, the greatest takeaway was the random hand count. Now, the state requires three. I would like you to consider upping that number. Three's the minimum, six is better, eight would be better than that. Although it would be best to do the hand counts with in-house staff, if cost becomes an issue, I would volunteer, and I think that some others would also. So please give serious consideration to increasing the number of random hand counts. On a completely different topic, I know I have three minutes, would it be possible to get like a countdown timer either here or up on there? They would have to be pretty big, we could get that distance, so that we would have an idea of where we are. Right now, I have no idea where I am in the time of three minutes. I have a completely different topic, but I'm sure that it's going to be too long for the time I have left, so I will come back next week and raise this for your consideration.
You have a minute and a half.
Really?
You have a minute and a half.
I'm going to try it. Okay. Please consider putting the, what do you call it, hear citizen input back at the end of the agenda. I had heard someone say it was removed because no one was using it. Well, I've never called the fire department, but I really like the idea that they're there. Seriously, how long can it take to say, "Item 24," anyone wishing to address the court at this time? Seeing none, item 25. Anytime the issue of here citizens was brought up, I'd really like to brag that the Commissioners Court allowed a second one at the end, should someone hear something during the meeting that they would like to then address. That second spot is a clear indication that this court takes citizens' concerns very seriously, so something to think about. So please put it back in, even if it's rarely used. Nice to know it's there, and again, it would give me the right to brag on y'all. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Dr. Walter Dougherty, come up.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I want to second that and follow up. I've received a number of positive comments from the community complimenting you on hosting an election integrity workshop with an eye toward improving our elections. A couple of questions came up in that session, which I'd like to follow up on. One was the percentage of voter turnout in the presidential elections, and I just gave the total figures, and off the top of my head said I thought that the average had been 50 to 65 percent. That was incorrect. That would have been the percentage of the over-18 population. So the other question related to that that came up was, how many standard deviations was 2020 off of the previous election years? And so when I did the calculations, from 2000 to 2016, the average turnout in presidential elections was 85.7 percent. However, in 2020, the total turnout as a percent of registered voters was 94.8 percent, and that is three standard deviations above the mean. So if you remember the famous bell curve, that means there's one chance out of 1,000 that the 2020 election was like the 2002, 2016 election, so I wanted to correct that. Also, I wanted to follow up on Judge Peters' suggestion of having another cross-check by counting at random an additional three or more precincts, as was mentioned by the previous speaker. So I'm looking forward to the results of that. The other cross-check that I mentioned of balancing the election results against the cast vote records, which Brazos County has not balanced in the past, I'm looking forward to the results from this election so we can be sure that the cross-checks work and the numbers balance. So thank you very much, and I'm going to go vote, and check it twice.
Thank you, Dr. Dougherty. The next is presentation and discussions, Thompson Creek Watershed Protection Plan, and Jason Gerlick.
Morning, Court. Glad to be here this morning. My name is Jason Gerlick. I am part of the Texas Water Resources Institute, and we are part of Texas A&amp;M Agri Life Research and Extension, and I just wanted to brief you guys this morning on our efforts in the area to develop a watershed protection plan for Thompson's Creek. Start off my presentation, I'll give just a little bit of background. So these plans are aimed to address impaired waterways here in the state of Texas. Thompson's Creek has been impaired for the contact recreational standard set by the state of Texas for bacteria since 2002, and its tributary Steel Creek and Cottonwood Branch have been impaired since 2006. There were recreational use assessments done on these creeks in order to determine which standard of recreational water quality should be applied to these creeks based off of the use of the public. And so some of these creeks have a primary contact recreational standard of 126, and some of these creeks have a standard of secondary contact recreation of 630, which would be on Cottonwood Branch. Thompson's Creek is still under review, but as the water quality numbers will show on the next slide, making our, justifying our project to move forward. In order to get here, though, we did ensure as the Texas Water Resources Institute that, you know, these impairments were verified. So from 2018 to 2022, there was routine monitoring done on Thompson's Creek, Steel Creek, and the Cottonwood Branch in order to verify that impairment was in place and these water quality numbers exceeded the state of Texas standards. That was true, and so the Texas Water Resources Institute acquired funding to then move into the development of a watershed protection plan. This is a fully funded project that's already begun, and part of our first initial process is to just make the public aware in a briefing like this to the Commissioners Court. So what does the water quality look like? You can see here on the Cottonwood Branch, our seven-year geo mean shows an average of about 1,600 coliform units per 100 milliliters, and those numbers are indicative of E. coli, and that is our indicator bacteria, the amount of bacteria that may be present in the creek. The higher number, the greater threat that could pose to the public, if they ingest or get on their skin for some health issues. So we like to keep those numbers at those state of Texas standards, hence the purpose of this project. You can see it's Steel Creek exceeds the 126 coliform units per 100 as well, and so does Thompson's Creek with 1,150 as its seven-year geo mean. These geo means are used in order to kind of weed out the extreme values on the high end or low end. We've had flood events, we've had extreme droughts. These numbers try to paint that clearest picture of what that water body looks on a day-to-day basis. So all that provides us justification. Uh oh, running some technical difficulties here. I just go ahead and click it. To move into what we call a watershed protection plan. A watershed protection plan is a community-driven approach to address these existing water quality impairments in our waterways here in the state of Texas. Any management measures that are defined here in a watershed protection plan are completely voluntary. This is our way of facilitating the conversation and letting the public know what they see the issues are and what they see is the best way to address them. They are developed through partnership with stakeholders, you know, to make you guys aware that I have been reaching out to the general public to see if we can engage some stakeholders to come to these meetings and help develop this watershed protection plan. At the end of the day, what's great about them is they do allow for increased funding eligibility for the watershed. Once these plans are accepted, it is a good leverage point for communities in order to acquire funding for maybe low-impact developments, for pet waste stations, watershed coordinators, field reps, including extra monitoring, have all been funded through leveraging a watershed protection plan here. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So that's where we get to the implementation. That's where we really like to emphasize, what is the end product of these stakeholder meetings, of our outreach efforts to develop this voluntary watershed protection plan, is we come up with a comprehensive plan that addresses the sources, as well as getting people involved at the local level, but also for folks like you here in the local government, it is a comprehensive plan and overview of everything that's going on inside of that watershed that can help me make the court or our local citizens make better informed decisions going forward. That is our goal with these plans, is provide information and education to the public, and through these implementation efforts, to get these creeks, rivers, and streams back down to the state of Texas contact recreation water quality standards, and maybe at the end of the day, get these streams delisted and off of the 303 D list. Next slide, please. So what does that look like here in the fall? My colleague Duncan and I, we have been making sure to reach out to stakeholders, come to the court, and brief you guys on our efforts. And in the spring, we'll start to have our first stakeholder meetings, as well as educational workshops here in the watershed area to bring everyone up to speed on what a watershed protection plan is and how it can be beneficial to the general public. As you can see here on this screen, this isn't the first time one of these have been done. I'm actually working on a few of them right now in other parts of the state of Texas, but they exist anywhere from the Panhandle down to the Valley into East Texas and into the Pecos region as well. So they have been tried and intrued as a measure that we can take to improve water quality across the state of Texas. Next slide, please. Yep, and that is all for me. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, going back to your second slide.
Yes, ma'am.
So you highlighted three areas in red.
Yes, ma'am.
The geo mean, I guess that number means that for the three that you identified, then that is a high number that you're saying we need to work on getting it down.
Yes, ma'am.
So are you trying to get it, so in the last column, are you trying to get it down to that 630?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, that's?
Those are the standards.
Standard number?
Set by the state of Texas.
Okay.
And once those numbers, over time, get to that value, then the creek can be delisted and off the 303 D list.
Just want to be sure I'm understanding what you were doing here.
Yep, yep. That water quality didn't get to where it is overnight, and it's not going to change overnight, but these plans are a long-term effort in order to address that and bring those numbers down.
Okay, just for clarification, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Clarification.
Yes, sir.
Geo mean, E. coli geo mean, that doesn't really ring a bell with just people like me who are not in the science of what you do. So explain to me kind of just basically, what are the sources of the degradation of the water quality relative to your measurement for E. coli? And are there other measures, as well as E. coli, that show significant impact to the water quality as well?
Okay, so E. coli comes from anything that basically has a gut. It comes from hair, fur, and feathers, and it is used as our indicator for generic bacterial diseases that could, infections that could exist in waterways. So that would be, you know, non-point source hogs is always a good one that we have a lot of stakeholders point to and emphasize in these watershed protection plans, but also wildlife in general. You know, livestock do play a role, humans play a role as well. Anything that has a gut, hair, fur, and feathers can contribute to these bacterial loadings and numbers that you see here on the screen. In regards to the geo mean, that is our way to get the best running average of what the actual water quality looks like there in the creek, because numbers during a flood event are going to be exceedingly high. Numbers during a drought event, when there is no water in these creeks, will be nonexistent. So how do we ensure that we're coming up with a number that's not skewed in any one of those ways? That's how we're able to use a geo mean. It basically accounts for those extreme values to give us a better idea of what the current conditions are in the creek. And was there a third part, sir? Did I answer your question wrong?
No, I think that's good. So when you talk about hogs, you're talking about feral pigs?
Yes, sir, feral hogs.
Okay, and what are some of the things that you've done in the other watershed protection plans that you've put together that have mitigated the issues of what you're using to measure? I did ask if there were other measurements other than E. coli that y'all used, but the other part was, what's the mitigation process look like? What does it entail?
Okay, to answer the first part of the question, there are other water quality parameters that are taken in these water bodies. In the state of Texas, only bacteria has a water quality standard. We do have nutrient concerns in these waterways, as well as DO, but in the state of Texas, the only thing that's regulated is its bacteria number. Now, some of the efforts that have worked in other...
Help me out here, DO.
Dissolved oxygen, excuse me. So essentially...
I got to get you down on my level, so I apologize.
This is good for me, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
I appreciate science, and thank you for being here, by the way, too.
Absolutely, glad to be here. And so dissolved oxygen, essentially how much oxygen's in the water for those fish to breathe. You know, too little, those fish will go belly up, and detrimental to the overall habitat and recreational ability of these waterways. Measures that have worked in other watershed protection plans, and to address the feral hog problem, there have been, these watershed protection plans have been leveraged to create a bounty program in some counties through communication with Commissioners Court, as well as leverage to basically get grant funding from the state soil water conservation board to have hog trappers, as well as there has been funding that's been used to exclusion fencing of hogs for, you know, feedlots, feed pens, deer feeders, that local landowners have been able to use as well.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, we will consider, consider and take action on Agenda Items 4 through 21. Number four is proclamation 23-029, designated November the 11th, 2023, as Polish Day in Brazos County, Texas. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded. I didn't see Dr. Mazurkovich here today. Thought maybe he would be here to receive it, but he didn't. It's pretty long, but I'll tell you, it's a good one. Anybody, it'll be up online, very informative, so...
Would it be appropriate to celebrate sometime later on today with a good coal spear?
That might be, with, if you had one of those squeeze boxes that he likes to play, you know, he's good at it.
I might even be able to polka, who knows? This is great, thank you.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to second yet?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, certainly there's none. Motion carries. Let's see, this is, nope, that's not mine. There is a mine. Okay. Number five is approval of cancellation of Commissioners Court for the week of December the 25th to 29th, 2023, due to Christmas holidays.
Move approval, second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number six is approval of nonprofit organization application for Brazos County inmate work, crew, labor to assist National Guard to set up tents for the annual radio MASH toy drive.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
They do a great job collecting toys for those that don't have toys for Christmas, so they do a terrific job.
Yes, they do. Did we vote on that?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number seven is considering and approve the appointment of Nina Payne, Brazos County Budget Officer, effective November the 11th, 2023.
Move to table.
Second.
Motion made seconded to table that item. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number eight is approval of the following job description, information technology, B. 1246, Chief Information and Security Officer.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number nine is approval of contract Garrett Family Investments LLC for the purchase of real property in the amount of $850,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 10 is approval of contract 24-033R, Oracle EPM Support with Inoffend Solutions LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 12 is approval of renewal of 24-076R, lane stripping and pavement markers with Highway 1 LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 12 is approval of renewal of 24-076R, lane stripping and pavement markers with Highway 1 LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 13 is approval of CIP 24-535, tax office server migration with Harris Govern...
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 14 is considering and take action on Wixon Creek SUD utility permit for a one-inch water line crossing Woody Drive located 200 feet southwest of Forest Drive, site located in Precinct 2.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 15 is approval of acceptance of roads and roadway drainage structures in Agglan Business Phase 3B in Brazos County Road, into the Brazos County Road Maintenance System, site located in Precinct 4.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 16 is approval of acceptance of roads and roadway drainage structures, Agglan Business Park, Phase 3D, into Brazos County Road Maintenance System, site located in Precinct 4.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 17 is tax refund application for the following...
Move approval, A through E.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve A through E, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 17 is tax refund application for the following...
Move approval, A through F.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 19 is budget amendments, FY 22/23 budget amendments, 55.01, and FY 23/24 budget amendments, 6.01 through 6.04.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 16 is approval of acceptance of roads and roadway drainage structures, Agglan Business Park, Phase 3D, into Brazos County Road Maintenance System, site located in Precinct 4.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 16 is approval of acceptance of roads and roadway drainage structures, Agglan Business Park, Phase 3D, into Brazos County Road Maintenance System, site located in Precinct 4.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 17 is tax refund application for the following...
Move approval, A through E.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve A through E, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 17 is tax refund application for the following...
Move approval, A through F.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 17 is tax refund application for the following... I think we just did that one. Number 18 is Commissioners Court minutes for the following dates.
Move approval, A through F.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 20 is personnel change status...
Move approval, A and B.
Second.
And with the exception of the Budget Officer.
Yes.
We'll deal with that next week, so it's to approve everything except the Budget Officer this morning.
So do you need to amend your motion, Nathan?
Yes.
And I, second with the amended motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 21 is payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8125627 through claim number 8125740, and claim number 9008917 through claim number 9008989.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 19 is approval of contract Garrett Family Investments LLC for the purchase of real property in the amount of $850,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 10 is approval of contract 24-033R, Oracle EPM Support with Inoffend Solutions LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 10 is approval of contract 24-033R, Oracle EPM Support with Inoffend Solutions LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 11 is approval of contract 24-075 with Father Flanagan's Boys Home for Housing Services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 11 is approval of contract 24-075 with Father Flanagan's Boys Home for housing services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 12 is approval of renewal 24-076R Lane Stripping and Pavement Markers with Highway 1 LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 13 is approval of CIP 24-535 Tax Office Server Migration with Harris Govern.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 14 is considering take action on Wickson Creek SUD Utility Permit for a one-inch water line crossing Woody Drive located 200 feet southwest of Forest Drive, site located in Precinct 2.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 15 is approval of acceptance of roads and roadway drainage structures in Agglan Business Park Phase 3B in Brazos County Road, into the Brazos County Road Maintenance System, site located in Precinct 4.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 16 is approval of acceptance of roads and roadway drainage structures Agglan Business Park Phase 3D into Brazos County Road Maintenance System, site located in Precinct 4.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 17 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval, A through E.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve A through E, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 17 is tax refund application for the following. I think we just did that one. Number 18 is commissioners' court minutes for the following dates.
Move approval, A through F.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 19 is budget amendments FY 22/23, budget amendments 55.01, and FY 23/24, budget amendments 6.01 through 6.04.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 20 is personnel change status.
Move approval, A and B.
Second.
And with the exception of the budget officer.
Yes.
We'll deal with that next week, so it's to approve everything except the budget officer this morning.
So do you amend your motion, Nathan?
Yes.
And I'm second with the amended motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 21 is payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8125627 through claim number 8125740, and claim number 9008917 through claim number 9008989.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Number 22 is an acknowledgement of the MHMR FY 2024 Operating Budget, Staff Salaries by Position, and Executive Directors Total Compensation and Benefits Pursuant to the Texas Health and Safety Code Title VII, Subtitle A, 534.010 and 534.014, and then an acknowledgement of FY 2023, 2024 Budget Taxes by Fund as of November 1, 2023, and an acknowledgement of FY 2023, 24 Contingency Budget Taxes by Fund as of November 1, 2023. Then number 24 is juvenile directors' report on detention populations. Is Linda? Is it that? Here they are. Juveniles in detention, 40 males, 31, and females, nine. And there are 28 juveniles on electronic monitor. And then sheriff's report on inmate population, sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. 728 today, 609 men, 119 women, 52 on electronic monitoring.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sheriff. Number 26 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge. Go ahead, commissioner.
Well, today's election day, so remind everyone to go vote if you have not.
Thank you.
Please take your friends and neighbors.
Absolutely.
Because the turnout is kind of low, so get folks out to vote.
I needed to make an apology to Dr. Mazurkowitz in advance of, and also, since this is Polish Day, Kolch is a German-style of beer, so I apologize for that. So let's put Gradziski in there, because it's apparently a very classic Polish craft beer. So my apologies to those folks earlier by referring to the wrong country's beer to celebrate.
Well, as a descendant of both countries, I'll tell you, the lack of vowels makes it easy to confuse them, so. On behalf of those, you're forgiven.
Dr. Mazurkowitz might have corrected you had he been here, but since he's not, none of us would have probably known.
Well, it was drawn to my attention.
I just wanted to reiterate Interstate 14 is something that is being planned now. So in fact, if you drive in and around out by Rogers there in Fort Hood, the Interstate 14 is signed, are already up. So the Bryan District of TexDOT, which is a large area of central Texas, the district is located in Bryan, but it controls a large area of central Texas around us. They're still accepting input, and residents may submit comments, even if you weren't able to make one of the live, in-person sessions. They're accepting comments on the website through November 20th. So if you have an opinion on this, please don't let this chance pass you. Make that opinion known in writing on the TexDOT website. Just keyword search I-14 or I-14 Central Texas. It'll bring you right to it. You have until Monday, the 20th of November, to make your position known.
Thank you.
Following up on that, the MPO is meeting on Monday at 9 o'clock here in this courtroom, and our speaker will be Juan Aras, who is doing the alignment study for I-14. So he's going to be making a presentation. If anyone would like to attend that, it's open.
Okay, thank you, commissioner. Any other announcement or possible future agenda topic? Hearing none, then the next item is to adjourn. Thank you all.